We are recording.
We'll call the meeting to order. Is it, is the recorder on Nancy?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So, a meeting will be called to order at 7:03 on April 21st, 2020, 7:03 PM. I'll read the agenda for this evening, and obviously, this is a Zoom meeting. And the URL is zoom.us, and there's a meeting ID number of 640-012-811. And because of the coronavirus pandemic, we're doing this meeting via Zoom for everybody's safety. While being compliant with directives of our, of our leaders throughout the country, we're also trying to be helpful in letting our citizens get the help they need with their properties. So, I hope everyone understands that this is unique, and we're working very hard to accommodate everybody. So, our agenda for this evening is a public hearing for Mr. and Mrs. Zabala, 15 Far Horizons Drive. It's our case number 20-01. It's for Section 3.4.C.1.D., side yard setback of 10 feet to 8 feet. Then we'll hear a case for the Labozetta's. It's our case number 20-02 of 76 Wolf Pits Road for Section 3.4.C.1.A. and B. for a front yard setback, normally 50 feet. They'll be seeking a variance to 44.6 feet. After we do that public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, we'll go into our work session, and then we have a business meeting. We have to go over some minutes from previous meetings, some invoices, obviously, our work session to discuss these two variances. Then we have some new business that we'll talk about. And then, public input is, is anyone from the public that wishes to join this meeting? Anybody in town can join this meeting via the Zoom web conference. And then we'll adjourn, and that'll be it until next month. So, that's our agenda. Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, can I make just a quick question? I don't know who you guys are. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure who am I talking to.
Okay, sir, could you just tell me your name?
My name is Gaston Zabala.
15 Far Horizons Drive?
Yes. I'm just gonna chip in here real quick as the admin for the meeting. I think everybody should introduce themselves for the record. I'm speaking to ZBA members here before we start. Just some protocol to go through real quick before people speak, whether it's to provide comment or to ask questions, please state your name for the record so that we can pick it up on our transcript. Makes it easier for the recording if we can know who's who when they say who it is. The other item, I forget what it is now.
I would tell you, the other item is when you go to vote this evening on any of the applications, instead of all saying "I," Rick, I would ask that you do a roll call and do it by name. So, everybody is voting individually, and we get that on the record.
Okay, that's a good idea.
One last thing, in case people haven't done it already. In the, at the bottom of the Zoom application, if you haven't done so already, there's a way that you can change the view from whomever's just speaking to anybody. If you have it on everybody, it has the names of whom everybody is so that we don't have to go back and forth trying to figure out who's who. It makes it a little bit easier, I think, to follow along if we are, if you are in gallery view instead of speaker view.
Okay.
Okay.
What would that be on my phone? Participants?
It might be under Participants.
It's usually in the upper right corner.
The upper right-hand corner? Oh, I see what you're, I see.
Upper right-hand corner?
This red button?
No, that's just garage.
So, it's next to where it says, "Enter Full Screen." On the left of that is the view choice.
Jay, don't touch any buttons. I don't want to lose you.
Yeah, no, I'm good where I am.
You're good, right where you are. David, what's going on with our 76 Wolf Pits Road? Have you heard?
I am trying to get in touch with Mr. Labozetta. I don't know if he's gotten my email to say, to call me. I am trying to find his number as we speak.
Let me see. I think I have his number here.
I'm looking through your Gmail right now, Beth.
No, I didn't have it that way. All right, here's his phone number.
Okay, I'm ready.
It's 203-948-6547.
Okay, I'm gonna put myself on mute to help him while we get everything else going. Just let me know if you have any questions, okay?
Okay. So, to Gaston and Margaret, everyone present on this, on your screen are members of the zoning Board of Appeals. Would you just acknowledge that you can see their names underneath their pictures so you know who they are?
Yep.
Okay, and then we have the Secretary Nancy LaBaubau. Rick Lawler is the chairman. And you know me, I'm the Director of Planning for the Department. Okay, Rick, it's yours.
We lost Rick.
Yeah.
He's connecting. Anybody see Saturday Night Live where they did a skit on this? It's on YouTube or on Facebook somewheres. I would strongly recommend it. It's hysterical.
The other thing you can do is click on the participants icon on the bottom, and it shows you on the right who is connected to.
Okay, Rick is back. Rick, it's all yours. You can go with the meeting.
Yeah, I, I lost, I was trying to get everybody on view here, and I ended up disconnecting myself. Okay, so did we all introduce ourselves?
Yes, everybody's all set.
Okay. And Mr. Zabala, do you know who I am? I'm Rick Lawler, the chairman.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Okay, so we're gonna continue. I'm gonna read the legal notice. "Connecticut Legal Notice, Zoning Board of Appeals." "The zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Bethel will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM using the virtual platform Zoom to hear the following applications: Mr. and Mrs. Zabala, 15 Far Horizons Drive, for a variance of Section 3.4.C.1.D., side yard setback from 10 feet to 8 feet for a pool application. And then, the Labozetta's, 76 Wolf Pits Road, for a variance of Section 3.4.C.1.A. and B., front yard setback from 50 feet to 44.6 feet for a garage application. The public may send comments via regular mail or email at landjuce@bethel-ct.gov. The public may participate in the hearing by clicking on the link attached via your computer or smartphone If you would like to participate by a home phone, please call us at our office, 203-794-8578 for instructions. Richard Lawler, Chairman, dated this 8th day of April, 2020." Okay, so, we're gonna do Mr. and Mrs. Zabala, first of 15 Far Horizons Drive, Bethel. Just wanna see, so right now, we have, as far as seating members, everybody here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's myself, Jay Streamman, Melanie Ryan, Eileen, and that's four. We're gonna go with five. So, we're gonna, Sue Dolan is not here? No, Sue? Okay, so, we'll seat Stephen Hippolito. Okay, Stephen, you're seated?
Okay.
And you'll be seated for the, for the duration of this public hearing and the next one. Okay, the next one for Wolf Pits Road. All right, so, before we get into Mr. and Mrs. Zabala, and you're, you guys making your case, can I get either Beth or David to read the staff report, this memo? Dave?
Beth is talking, but she's muted.
Beth is muted.
I just unmuted myself, sorry. Nancy, do you have the staff report?
Nancy, do you wanna read it?
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll read it.
Good.
I'm gonna read the staff report for 15 Far Horizons Drive, side yard setback. "The applicant is proposing a variance of a side yard setback for an accessory structure from 10 feet to 8 feet for an existing above ground pool which was permitted through the department. It was requested that the owner obtain an A2 survey which shows the discrepancy. At the time of obtaining the permit, it was thought by the applicant that the setback was 5 feet, and they owned 2 more feet beyond the stockade fence that is presently in place around the pool area." So, that's the, that's the case. I'm looking at the application, and I would say everyone should have a copy of the application and the map. So, at this point, we'll turn it over to Mr. and Mrs. Zabala to go ahead and state your case and your hardship for this, for this requested variance.
Okay. When we went to apply for the permit, we were told about our setbacks and stuff like that. And we were told back then that our fence should fit in for my property. I'm in construction, and I follow rules. And this, well, it's not about being in construction and follow rules. I would never put my pool 2 foot towards my neighbor, knowing that that's not what I'm supposed to do. So, I think it was miscommunication when I went to the building department to apply for the permit. And I did my hand drawing, everything was approved, we set up the pool. When, then I did my addition, and I did a couple other things, and I was requested to do a variance just to a survey, I'm sorry, survey to, you know, pinpoint everything that I did knew in the house. And I did, and it turned out to be that my fence was actually my property line, which we didn't know that. When we went to apply for the permit for the pool at the very beginning, it was supposed to be 2 foot, our fence was supposed to be 2 foot into our property. So, the pool right now is 8 feet to the fence, and there was a miscommunication about the 2 feet, so that's how I got the 10 feet. Everything was approved. I set up the pool, I built a deck around, which the deck is already set into my property more, so I don't think that's the issue. The deck, it's just the pool itself. And that's where we are.
Okay. All right, is... Do you have anything else you wanna say? I see on your application, real quick, it says, so, looks like you're, is the, you're putting a deck on the pool now? That's the reason for this?
The deck is done. The deck is done. It's just that the deck...
You just wanna make it all legal.
I set it back, you know, towards my property more. I didn't put it in line with the pool. It's toward my property more because I wanted to put the equipment there and stuff like that, like the pump and things like that.
Yeah.
But I set the deck towards my property more. So, it's just the pool itself that is dead on 8 feet from the fence.
Okay.
And actually, the fence runs a little bit, you know, diagonal. It's not like perfectly straight with my property either. So, at the beginning of the fence, I'm good, but at the other end, I'm dead on, so, or something like that. It's a little confusing, but it's on the survey that David requested me to have done, so I can get my finals done.
Okay, is there, is there, before I take any questions from the public, I'm not sure if there's anyone from the public. Do you have anything else you wanna add? Because we're gonna have, we're gonna have an opportunity to ask you questions. I think we did a good job explaining it. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to add at this time?
Oh, no, the only thing is that, you know, it's unfortunate towards my neighbor that he's actually participating right now, which I thank him for that, that, you know, we're actually 2 foot towards his, I mean, it's not towards his property, but we shouldn't be where we are, and it's an unfortunate situation that I would never wanna be in there. But unfortunately, at this point, we are.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? This, this request, this application? Mr. Broad, are you here for this case or another case?
He's just listening.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm here for this case.
Okay, did you have any comments or questions?
I, I'm not sure how everything works with this. I have no problem with where his pool is set up, location to the fence, and my property line. I'm all good with that, so I don't know legalities with that, but I have no problem with what...
So, you're here just to voice no objection as a neighbor?
Correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Broad, can you say your address?
It's Broad.
Broad, sorry.
13 Far Horizons Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public, from the public on board here?
Yeah, hi, Matt Chamberlain's here.
Matt Chamberlain?
Yeah, what's going on, man? Been a long time.
How come I don't, how come I don't see your picture?
Let me try and figure that out. I'm not as, I'm zooming on my iPad and on my computer.
This is the famous Matt Chamberlain, the soccer star.
How do I get my camera to, hey, there you go.
There he is.
No, that was...
Yeah, so, we're at 11 Far Horizons Drive, and we have no problem either.
Okay.
Mr. Chamberlain?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
11 Far Horizons Drive.
11, okay, thank you.
And how do you spell your last name, sir?
Chamberlain, C-H-A-M-B-R-L-A-I-N.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm scrolling through. I don't see any other members of the public. Does anybody else see any members of the public? Okay. Commission questions. So, Dave, do you have any questions? For Mr. Zabala?
Are you asking me?
Jay.
Oh, sorry, Jay.
No, I'm sorry. I have no questions.
Okay. Melanie?
No questions.
Eileen?
No questions.
Stephen?
No questions.
Okay, I have one question, Mr. and Mrs. Zabala. Did you notify all your neighbors via certified return receipt mail?
Yes, we have their receipts with us now.
And Nancy, Beth, we, do we have those?
I will get them from them.
Okay.
Hang on, Beth, you were muted. You're still muted, Beth, hang on.
I heard her.
Oh, okay.
I can hear Beth.
I'm trying to get in touch with you. Please check your phone.
Who's trying to get in touch?
I'm trying to, I'm texting David. The, the green cards and things can be waived, not to have actual receipt of them. We know that they mailed them.
He's showing us them on the cameras, so that's great. I can see them.
They can turn them in a temple.
Okay, so, if we have no other questions, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and then we're gonna move on to our next case. So, Mr. and Mrs. Zabala, feel free to stay, stay tuned. We're gonna talk about your case in a little bit, but first, we have to go to a public hearing for another case. And then later on in the meeting, we talk about both of them, okay?
One thing before, just in case my two neighbors, they decide to leave, I just wanna say, I just wanna thank him, Matthew and Brian. Appreciate you joining.
Yes, Mr. Broad and, and Mr. Chamberlain, you guys are welcome to hang in there too.
Ah, you know what? I got some free time.
So, everyone's welcome to stay. All right, so, we're gonna close, we're gonna close that, that case, and we're gonna move on to our next one. Is Vincent Labozetta there?
Yes, he is.
Okay, Mr.? We have, Mr. Labozetta, how are you?
Yeah, I'm David.
Okay, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So, are you, were you on when we introduced ourselves, who we are and what we're doing?
No, we didn't get on that quickly. A little technical error, so I'm on my iPhone, close to my laptop now.
Okay.
So, I get your introductions.
Okay, we'll introduce ourselves real quick, so you know who we are. And you're, you're breaking up a little bit, so maybe you could speak a little louder into your microphone?
Yep, it's, it's my cell service. It'd be a little tough.
Okay, well, right now, it's pretty good.
Okay.
I'll start, I'll introduce myself. Can you see me? I'm Richard Lawler. I'm the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes, I can see you.
And then we'll, we'll go on down the line. Jay, you wanna introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Jay Streamman. How are you?
Hi, Jay.
I'm Melanie Ryan. Yo, Melanie Ryan, Secretary.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Eileen?
Oh, Eileen.
Eileen, you there?
I'm Eileen.
Hi, Eileen.
And Stephen?
Hi, Stephen Hippolito, how are you?
Hi, Stephen, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, so, I'm gonna read the staff report on your property, Mr. Labozetta, and then we'll let you speak, okay?
Okay.
So, this is for 76 Wolf Pits Road, a front yard setback.
Correct.
"The applicant is proposing a variance of the front yard setback from 50 feet to 44.6 feet for a detached garage. The property is located in the R80 residential zone. It is 1.836 acres in size and is served by a septic system and well."
Correct.
"The applicant should review with the board how to, the proposed location was chosen with regard to the existing setbacks for an accessory structure. A building permit was issued for the structure, but a certificate of occupancy was not received. Due to an inspection of the property, it was requested by the department to have the owner obtain an A2 survey. It should be noted that the home, although not meeting the required setbacks, was built prior to the institution of the zoning regulations." Okay, and with that, Mr. Labozetta, please state your case.
All right, well, I did apply for the permit in, I guess it was '99. I knew the setback was 50 feet. The builder knew the setback was 50 feet. The only thing I can say is he measured it incorrectly, builder error. You know, we, we have plenty of land. We have no advantage to keeping it 5 feet closer to the road. I wish it was 5 feet away from the road. I was in shock when the, we found out it was built incorrectly, or built, builder error, I guess you could call it. I was in shock, and no reason to, I had no, no intention of building it out of, you know, in violation of the code.
Uh-huh, okay.
I was in shock when they measured it. I really, really was in shock. I was like, can't be.
Okay, did you, did you notify your neighbors of this hearing?
Yes.
And you two have those cards?
I have all five cards.
Okay. All right. Before we ask for public input, is there anything else you wanna say right now?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that's in this meeting that would like to comment in one way or another on Mr. Labozetta's request? I don't see anybody else.
I have letters, I do have letters of support in regards to this application.
Okay, good. Can you just, how many letters and who are they from?
I have two letters here. One is from Alan J. Ackerman. This letter is to inform you that I, Alan J. Ackerman, owner of 74 Wolf Pits Road, have no objection to the proposed variance concerning the garage at 76 Wolf Pits Road. I'm looking for it now, and I know there was another letter. Vincent, do you remember if any, the other neighbor that sent a letter in to us?
Dale, Dale Picard did, Dale?
Yes, Louise, Louise Picard. It was a letter similar to this. I apologize, Rick.
No problem.
I had asked...
It's just good to know that there's some support.
Yes, there is support. They were all letters of support.
Okay, very good. All right, let's go to commission questions, Jay.
I have no questions. Sounds pretty simple.
Okay, Melanie?
I have no questions.
All right, Eileen?
I have no questions.
Oh, nice and loud.
That's good.
Stephen?
I have no questions.
Okay, I have one question, Mr. Labozetta. What year was the house built?
Was built in 1930 or before. The garage was built in 1999. So, I'm thinking that, I know, I know the house isn't, doesn't meet the setback. I'm thinking the builder looked at the house and extrapolated the frontage from there, and that's how we got to 50 feet. I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure what my house was actually built. I've tried to research it, but I come up with different stories on when it was actually constructed.
Maybe over the years, they widened the road.
Pardon?
Maybe over the years, they widened the road.
That's a pretty thin road, Wolf Pit. I mean, I don't think it's gonna wind it. It's pretty, pretty thin, but...
Yeah.
The survey said to me, it didn't make sense to me that, you know, he wouldn't check the measure because that was an addition on the house. I assume when I put the first addition on, the builder would measure 50 feet, but I don't know what they did. I really, truthfully, I don't know what happened, to be honest.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, if there's no more questions, no more public comment, we'll close the, we're gonna close the public... we'll close the, we're going to close the public hearings, and we're going to move towards our work session. Now, at this point, the public and the applicants are no longer allowed to speak. It's just going to be the board members that are going to discuss the merits of each request, and we're going to take a vote. I think we're going to take a vote. Usually, we take a vote, but you never know. So with that, the public hearing is closed, and we'll go into our work session, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
We have five people tonight?
We have five people, so it's myself, Jay Streamman, Melanie Ryan, Eileen Freeburn, and Stephen Ippolito.
We are going to have to seat, we are going to have to seat Stephen, correct?
We already did.
We already did.
David.
We already did. So there's five of us, which is perfect. Okay, so we'll start with Jay. Any comments or concerns?
I have no concerns. We're doing 15 right now?
We're doing 15 Far Horizons.
Yeah, I have no concerns with that.
Okay. Melanie?
I have no concerns with that either. I think it's fine.
Okay, Eileen?
I have no concerns either.
Stephen?
No concerns, straightforward.
Okay, good. I likewise have no concern. So if someone would like to make a motion and a second, in the motion, just read the legal notice, or the, you can read the legal notice, or you can read the agenda with the proper sections, and then the specific hardship. If someone wants to make that motion, we'll walk you through the motion.
I can make the motion.
Okay, Melanie, go ahead. Do you have the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve variance for Zabala 20-01, application for 15 Far Horizons Drive, Buffalo, for variance of section 3.4.1.1. D, side yard setback from 10 feet to 8 feet, with the hardship being that it was simply an error. It was built too close to the property line.
Excellent. Someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Jay.
I'll second. Eileen?
It's already seconded, Eileen. So motion was made by Melanie, seconded by Jay Streamman. So now we'll do a roll call vote. Jay?
Aye.
Melanie?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And myself is an aye, so it's a unanimous vote. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Zabala. Good luck. So can I, are you there? Can you see me?
Not now. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can see you.
Okay, so you're all set.
All right, thank you so much.
You just touch base with the office, and they'll set you up.
Are you guys going to need this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bring them into the office someday.
All right, no problem. We bring them up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Now, we're going to work in, go into our next work session for Mr. Labozetta of 76 Wolf Pits Road. So Jay, do you have any concerns or comments?
No, I have no concerns with that. It sounds like a pretty simple error that was made.
Okay, yep. Melanie?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay, Eileen?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay. Stephen?
I have no concerns.
Okay, and I also have no concerns. So if somebody would like to make a motion, read the sections and the info from our agenda, and then state the hardship into the record, who would like to do that as our motion?
I can make the motion again.
Okay, Melanie?
Yep. So this is, this is application 20-02 Labozetta at 76 Wolf Pits Road in Buffalo. And I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance of section 3.4.1.1. A and also B, front yard setback from 50 feet to 44.6 feet, with the hardship being an error by the builder.
Okay, good. Plus, I would put the age of the main house. It's pretty old, and it predated, the age of the main house predated zoning regulations. So we'll put that in there as well. Okay, so we'll do a roll, someone needs to second it.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Oh, sure.
So I got Eileen is seconding. Is that what I? So Eileen, Eileen, Melanie made the motion, Eileen is seconding, and then we'll do our roll call. Jay?
Aye.
Melanie?
Hi.
Eileen?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And myself is also an aye, so it's unanimous. So Mr. Labozetta, you're all set. You've got your variance. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'll drop the green cards off tonight down.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be great. Okay, okay, very good. Okay, so this, so that concludes our work session. Let me just get our agenda here.
We have our business.
We have some new business to introduce for next month. Codfish and DeMarco LLC is going to do some type of, looking for a variance at 29 Benedict's Road, variance section 3.2.1. A and E. So we have to take a vote to accept that case for next month, May's meeting, which most likely be another Zoom meeting. Someone want to make a motion to accept that as new business? Stephen, why don't you do it?
Sure. Make a motion to accept Codfish and DeMarco LLC, section 3.2.1. A and E for the May meeting as new business.
Okay, and seconded?
I'll second. Okay.
Okay. Eileen seconded, I believe?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we're going to move to a roll call on that. Now, Jay?
I want to abstain.
Okay, and I believe, Jay, you're going to recuse yourself next month?
Correct.
Okay. Melanie?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Okay, so we put that on the agenda for next month. We have regular minute meetings. I haven't seen any minutes recently. Are there minutes that I'm missing?
We had, the last meeting that we had minutes for was in January. We had a canceled meeting in February and a canceled meeting in March. Melanie had a question about that. Maybe Beth can address it. We did ask for an email vote to pay bills in March, but that was not, as I understood it, a meeting. So we don't have March minutes. I'm not sure if Beth would like to weigh in on that.
Minutes at this point, the whole purpose of tonight, to get you, tonight's meeting was to get you on board with Zoom. So as far as minutes, I've been busy with other things in the office. Nancy's been out of the office. So in order, I didn't have time to go look and see when your last meeting was.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since January.
Right, so what you will end up doing is that your next meeting, you can approve this meeting's minutes in January.
Okay, we'll approve, and next.
Throw them all in the pot.
We'll approve tonight in January, and then anything else that may come up? Okay, good. And then we're going to table the minutes till next month. And are there any invoices for tonight?
Not that I know of. Beth, I didn't have any invoices up there with that. We did invoices last time. That was an email, and we paid, we were in arrears, so we paid that. So we'll have something coming up, but for the next meeting.
No, you won't, because now legal notices are not put in the newspaper. They are posted in the website.
Oh, so.
Charge? No.
How nice is that?
Okay, that's good news.
Okay, any other, anything else I'm missing?
What's the date of next month's meeting?
Oh, good question. I am showing, I'm showing May 19th.
Okay, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not that this isn't fun.
A lot of work.
It was just getting here.
Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, sounds like Stephen seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do a roll call for all those in favor of adjourning. Jay?
Aye.
Melanie?
Aye.
Eileen?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I am also in favor of adjourning. So the meeting is now adjourned. So we can turn off recording devices, and we can just have fun now.